Wake up Wake County and the Wake County League of Women Voters present the 2011 Wake County School Board District Three Candidate Forum.
We are doing what we call a forum tonight. Some people probably are more familiar from TV seeing debates, but in a forum, everybody speaks for a limited period of time and gives everybody an opportunity to speak and to be heard. I want to remind you about the Wake County Board of Education election. Our members of the board serve four-year terms. All members represent a district in the county and tonight we're seeing the candidates for District Three. This year, the districts Three, Four, Five, Six, and Eight are open for election, but you can only vote in the district where you live. All candidates aren't running as nonpartisan. As nonpartisan, it means they are not representing a particular political party. We made a few minor adjustments to make sure that we can answer as many questions as possible and be out of the room by about quarter after eight to eight-thirty is our goal. The candidates were advised earlier that we will, we have shortened the amount of time they will speak in their opening statements and that that will be two minutes and they will have one minute to respond to each question. And they will have a two-minute closing statement. We have timers up front here who will signal you when you have only 15 seconds to go. That kind of means get to the end of that sentence and stop. And I really appreciate, and it keeps things moving along if you can keep an eye on your The opening candidates have had three questions in advance to prepare their opening statements. And they will have two minutes to answer these three questions. And then, as I explained before, we'll go to questions. We have some questions we've prepared and people have been filling out cards with their questions. We are not going to take questions from the floor. This way, it moves along a little quicker and we hope to get through as many as possible. There are members of the league who will, if you have a card and kind of wave it at one of the members, they'll collect them from you. Oh, Mary Martorello in the back there, she can pick up your questions if you have some. Okay, I think that gets us ready to start. The candidates drew numbers to see who gets to speak first in their opening statements. The questions they will address in their opening statements are, "What do you hope to accomplish when you serve on the Wake County Board of Education?" "What specific skills and qualities would you contribute to the Board of Education?" And the third part is, "Serving on the Board of Education is extremely time-consuming and a commitment to the community. It can be stressful. Why do you want to take on this challenge?" And our first person to speak is Ms. Heather Lasordo.
Thank you for saying my name right. I appreciate that. The first question is, "What do you hope to accomplish when you serve on the Wake County Board of Education?" And the most important thing that I would like to do is, that I will do, is represent District Three and Wake County with everything I've got. I want to refocus the school system and return to the primary focus of our mission statement. The mission statement is, "The Wake County Public School System will significantly increase achievement for all students by providing a world-class education that equips students with the knowledge and expertise to become successful, productive citizens." That's the goal. That's what I'm going to get to. I want to step away from the rhetoric and focus on educating our children. The second question, "What specific skills and qualities would I contribute to the Board of Education?" In addition to my leadership experience in the Air Force and my financial background in the small business banking industry, I'm an involved mom. I'm a visionary thinker with strong leadership and strong communication skills. I will be a representative that responds. Those types of experiences mixed with my strong passion and vigorous participation in educationally-related issues for the past eight years is what I bring to the table. I also bring common sense and practical understanding. What parents want are school board policies that make sense. They want results. They want the school board to expend its resources on programs that have measurable results. They want a board that acts in a professional manner and they want a school system that works. The third question is, sacrificing and serving has been my life. I have been very blessed to be a stay-at-home mom. That gives me the opportunity. I will stop.
Thank you. Eric Squires will be our second candidate to respond to the questions.
I'm Eric Wayne Squires. I am a product of the Third District Public School System. Graduated from Millbrook, not Sanderson. And we appreciate the cow crossing sign y'all put in front of our school back then. But to serve on the board, obviously, we can't come just with our own agendas. We need to come bipartisan. We need to come with no particular axe to grind. We need to have a focus on what we would like to do. But to come with a particular agenda, I think, kind of poisons the pot. So, to serve on the board, I want to represent everyone in the district as much as possible, and that means from every student, no matter what level they're coming in at. For me, my background, I was in the AP classes when they first started in Wake County. I'm very thankful for that because that ended up leading me into a career of computer science and technologies. I worked in the research field. I understand what statistics are. I understand what testing is. And in the management school that I graduated from down in Wilmington, the one thing we learned is if you don't count it, it doesn't count. Right now, in the school system that we have, we study things like going down the road and making adjustment every 30 seconds. Obviously, you don't do that. You don't open your eyes and all of a sudden make an adjustment. We make lots of little adjustments along the way. That's what the school board does with the administration. We need to make those adjustments gradual so we don't make large adjustments later. I agree with a lot of things that the school board has done in the past, and I believe Wake County is poised to be one of the best school systems out there. Thank you.
Our third candidate to respond to the three opening questions will be Jennifer Mansfield.
Hi. The things I would like to accomplish on the school board are the continuation of the math placement. That's something I've been an advocate for for the past few years, and I think that's a great step we've been making to ensure that all our students are being given the opportunities that they deserve. And I'd like to replicate that across the curriculum. I'd like to increase the academic opportunities that are available to all of our students at our base schools. I've been an advocate for a long time for a true lottery for magnets, and I got a partial victory this past year with the removal of socioeconomic discrimination from the lottery process. But I'd like to see that be a true lottery, and I'd like to see us raise the level of academic opportunity available at every school. And the third thing, this is a big one, but as I believe Heather read, that part of our mission statement is to offer a world-class education, yet nobody's ever defined what that means. And I think that we need to define as a board what we mean by that, what we want to see each one of our students have access to while they're in school, and we need to come up with a plan for how to get there. The skills and qualities that I would bring, I'm a bridge builder. I'm running as an independent, and so my campaign is very grassroots. It's full of people who believe in me and my message, and I have supporters who are very far left and supporters who are very far right. And to me, that's a wonderful thing. And everyone says they're behind me because I keep politics out of it, I keep agendas out of it, and I just look at the facts. And that's another thing is, I'm an objective observer of things and I want to see all the facts. I don't go in for the hyperbole. There's always a little bit of truth to it, but you've got to get past all the rhetoric and hyperbole to get to the truth. And I've been an advocate for over six years in Wake County for parents. And why do I want to do this? I've been doing this for six years. I don't see myself stopping. It's just been a passion of mine, and I'm going to steal Christine Kushner's line. I've been to the meetings and I still want to do this.
Our fourth candidate to speak to the opening questions is Kevin Hill.
Thank you, and thank you for this evening. What I'd like to accomplish is a continuation of advocating and supporting our teachers. It's tied to student achievement. Our teachers and research shows are the most important factor that affects student achievement, yet we've been cutting back on their professional development time. We're losing five days next year while we're adding days to the school year that was professional development time. We have to find a way to support our teachers. Want to continue student achievement, emphasizing student achievement, but from a different perspective than most candidates are talking about. We have to celebrate our successes. I'm tired of our teachers being denigrated, the fact that our graduation rates are climbing. Ninety-five percent of our schools met or exceeded EOC or EOG, the state ABCs, is going in the right direction. Are we satisfied? No. But let's celebrate our successes and thank our teachers for what they do every day. I'd also like to look at governance issues. Advanced Ed concluded, I quote, "That high schools and Wake County public schools are in violation of Advanced Ed Standard Two, Governance and Leadership." We've been found guilty of violating the open meetings law. We're under investigation by the Office of Civil Rights. We need to provide good governance and leadership at the board level. Why am I running? The skills and qualities that I can contribute. Thirty-five years in Wake County as an educator and leader. I've been a principal for 11 years. I've led elementary, middle, and high schools. That can be dicey. Working with parents, 35 years of working with parents. Why do I want to serve on the board? It's my way to give back to Wake County. I've been here 46 years. The school system determines the economic and the health of the community. We need a strong school system.
Thank you all. Now, we will go to the questions with the one-minute responses. I know we're still gathering some from the audience, but I have a few to use to open. And let's see, we're going to rotate who starts first in the questions, and can we start at Heather and come this way and around? The first question we're going to address, "The current school board is reviewing a new options for a student assignment plan. What is your vision for an ideal assignment plan? How would you propose to work with Superintendent Tada's proposal?" Or is it Tada? Excuse me. Yeah.
My ideal solution for an assignment plan is kids going to school close to their homes while ensuring that all schools have the resources they need so every student can achieve the greatest possible achievement that they can go. I agree with the direction that Superintendent Tada is heading in. I think there are still a lot of questions. I don't think, I know there are still a lot of questions. I want to see some more answers about feeder patterns. I want to see some more answers about the percentage of seats saved in every school, every achievement school for Level One and Two children. I don't know that there's an ideal plan, but I want to get in there and help create what's the best for all of our children.
All right. As for the ideal assignment plan, that's very elusive, as Heather also thought. My thoughts on the Blue Plan right now are that I think that we need to get more parental buy-in. There really hasn't been any. We've had these assignment meetings where people have been able to give their input on feeder patterns, and then little things get changed, but there are a lot of overarching questions that have yet to be answered. There's some things I've asked for from the school system, and they say that it either doesn't exist or they're working on it. And that, to me, that's a concern. These are things I've asked for about the Blue Plan. The one thing I do like about it is that for once, low-income families are given the option if they want to be bused far away, and that is something that we have never given them, and that's something that the rest of us enjoy. We enjoy that choice. So that is one thing I'm very happy to see finally.
I saw the presentation that Superintendent Tada gave, and I must say I was impressed from the standpoint of they've gone the extra mile for the kids. They've gone the extra mile for the parents. They're trying to listen to as many inputs as they can and put them into a matrix and come up with something that's not so complicated that everybody can figure it out. To boil it down, five miles. They're trying to get everybody within about five miles. They've got about 85% success rate with that plan right now. Our opportunity in the future is let's bring that down even further. Why don't we make the schools close enough to where the kids can actually walk to school if they want to? Well, that's ambitious, but Wake County's growing by leaps and bounds, and we're going to be building dozens of schools in just a few years. We can plan our communities. We can plan our schools.
I appreciate the fact that Superintendent Tada added a fourth pillar to the school assignment, to the policy for assignment, and that's student achievement. Student achievement, proximity, stability, and choice are the four pillars that Tony said that we need to build a plan on. His recognition is, and his public statements are, "We cannot afford to build more high-needs schools." So whatever plan we look at, I think we have to look at balancing those four pillars to ensure that all of our kids at all of our schools have an equal chance to receive an excellent education. Should we not, it's going to be a tax issue. Walnut Creek Elementary budget is $1 million more than a comparable elementary, and we just opened that as a high-need school. This is a pocketbook issue and an issue of fairness for our children.
Thank you. That, this round will start at Jennifer Mansfield, and the question here for the group to address is, "What are the specific needs of District Three that you will fight for if elected to the Board of Education?"
One of the greatest needs for District Three is some equity in the availability of academic programs. I think for many years, people assumed that North Raleigh was all wealthy and our schools were fine, and we've been left behind for many years. We've been forgotten. And six of our 10 elementary schools are Title I, and I think a lot of people don't realize that about our district. So I'd like to see more equity in programs available. We all know budget cuts and things have been cut back, and especially Title I schools, they struggle with meeting the needs of struggling students and with those who are academically gifted. So I'd like to see more emphasis on that. And we have some issues with calendar continuity for some of our neighborhoods in District Three, and that's a big deal, and that's a big problem for some families, and I would like to see that addressed as well.
Diversity starts in the community. It's not to be fixed in our schools. In District Three, if you look at the high-growth area, and this is at least the second-highest growth area in the county, we can't keep building non-diverse areas and then expect our schools to be diverse. We need to make the whole community diverse. That goes with the commissioners, it goes with the zoning commission, it goes with everybody. This is a bigger issue than just the school board, but it's an issue for the parents to be able to fix. Y'all have pull throughout the entire system. The school board will help you do that. When they plan communities, let's plan them to be more diverse all the way across the board, and that will solve most of our school problems.
First, I agree with Jennifer. We need to look at program equity, curriculum equity in District Three, but I think the largest problem that we're going to have is going to be growth. Right now, we are one of the fastest-growing districts. We are going to be slated to open a new elementary in a modular elementary, and I don't know how that will work with choice. We are going to have to identify funds so we can keep up with growth. If we don't get a bond referendum shortly, then we're going to be way behind the eight ball, and we're going to have more and more students in modulators in District Three. I've taught in a single wide, I've taught in a double wide. It's not equitable. We need brick-and-mortar schools. So I think growth and ways to secure funding for growth is going to be our biggest problem in District Three.
Great thing about going last, I too would like to see and will fight for program equity up in District Three. I hear that from voters, from parents, that we do not have the same opportunities for our children up here as in other parts of the county, and I will fight for that. What I also will do is I will reach out to build relationships. I will build relationships with principals, teachers, parents, community organization groups, and get their feedback. I think that's very important, to engage with the community, bring all of the ideas and thoughts to the table, talk about it, discuss it, and then as a board member, take it back and vote on it.
The next question is regarding funding. The Wake County Public Schools are likely to need additional funds to build and improve schools in the near future. Would you support a bond initiative with the potential for increased taxes to raise these funds? If not, why not? If so, how would you convince the citizens of Wake County to support it? Do y'all want me to read the question again? Eric, you're first. Okay.
No, I think I called that one. Being someone that also spends, what, 73% of our taxes on the school system? Right? Homeowners in Wake County are probably some of the most generous folks anywhere for the school system. We have well over 60% of the county that don't even have kids in the public schools, but they support the public schools. They support the public schools better in Wake County than a lot of the bigger 15 districts that are larger than us. So... That's what it was. Yes, we've got a tremendous amount of growth that we're going to be facing in the next couple of years when the economy recovers. We're going to be having 5,000 students a year pouring back into our system like we did just a few years ago. We've got to handle that.
I'm on record as saying that I would support securing additional funding from the county commissioners. I've been saying that since '07 when I first took office. In terms of how the county commissioners choose to fund the new schools, that's really their call. That's their fiduciary responsibility. I'll advocate that we need more money. The fact that we're going to have to build 20-plus schools in the next eight years tells me that we need to get started thinking about something somewhere very quickly. We are 49th in the state, excuse me, 49th, yeah, in the state in terms of funding, or in the country in terms of funding. I think we fell behind Mississippi this year. And 92nd in the state in terms of county funding. We should have kept the one-cent temporary sales tax. 65% of the voters said we should keep it if we'd use it for education.
And I will begin as well by the, the school board cannot tell you if we're going to have a tax increase or not. That's the county commissioner's job. What I will do is, I want to see the budget look different as far as how we are able to view it. I would like to see more transparency. I would like for a citizen to be able to go to the budget and look at a line item, a couple pieces of paper, and then go find out where they can find more information about that line item, dollar amount. Once that happens and we're able to find, we are, I believe we have wasteful spending in our school system right now. I'm not saying that we have extra money, but we do have wasteful spending, and we need to identify it, and we need to redirect those funds where they are needed the most. And yes, we are going to need to build more schools, and I will support asking the county commissioners for more money as long as we have a definition of what we need the money for.
Yes, I would support asking the commissioners for more money. I believe that the school board should have asked for the funding to stay the same for students, at the very least, and I would support a bond initiative. But first, we need to make sure that the money we have is being spent wisely, is being spent on programs that are seeing a return on that investment. Superintendent Tada recently found Title I money that wasn't going where he thought it should, and I believe that amounted to about $1,000 per student in the Title I schools that went back to the students in the classroom. That sort of thing, I want to see happen. You know, we have to do that before we can ask people for more money, and we need to, this goes back to one of my objectives, to have an overall plan of world-class schools, what we want to offer our students. We need to have a plan before we ask people for money. They need to know what we're going to do with that. And finally, this really is kind of a moot point because right now, the climate, people aren't going to support a bond when we're so polarized.
Thank you. Next question. Wake County's graduation rate is slightly over 80%, meaning that all students entering high school, about one in five, do not graduate within five years. Should the district be doing more for at-risk students? What would this be and what grade levels would you focus this intervention? Kevin Hill will speak first.
The interventions really start in kindergarten, to be perfectly honest. We need to do more with K3, K5 if we're going to have success down the road, and the research shows that. If we're not successful with students in K3, K5, the data shows they're more likely to drop out or more likely to not be successful. So we need to provide support at those levels. That means lowering class sizes, but the General Assembly and the fact that we've lost $192 per pupil since 2007 in local funding, which is about $23 million a year, we need to look at funding. I mean, I hate to be simplistic, but the truth of the matter is if we're going to have smaller class sizes, we're going to have to have more faculty, more staff. I think the emphasis has to be at the lower levels, and that's where you can also attack students. If you're more successful there, you'll have fewer students in special programs, according to the research as well.
We certainly need to address that issue, and we need to address it very quickly, and I appreciate you giving those numbers. A lot of people are unaware of those facts. What I will do is not reinvent the wheel. What I will do is I will look at programs across our country and even outside of our country that work. They're proven to work. For whatever issue it is that we are addressing, whether it be low graduation rates, reading proficiency at a high school level, reading proficiency in the fifth grade, we need to look at what works. And we need to step out of the box, get away from the status quo, and realize that there are programs out there that are heads above what we're doing currently. I want to implement those programs. They absolutely need to be cost-effective, and I look forward to bringing that to the table.
All right. We know we don't have a lot of money. As Mr. Hill mentioned, all these things cost money. But two things that we can do and should be doing that will help with our graduation rate are making sure we're properly placing our students in the courses they need to be in. There was a study done within Wake school system that found that Level Four black males were being given remedial work. We need to address that discrimination, that bias that's gone on for years, and we need to hit it hard. And that's something that if you're a high-achieving kid putting a remedial program, that's the fast track to dropping out and disinterest. And so that's something that's very low-cost to be able to do. And another thing, I'm on the effectiveness of, or Evaluation of Effectiveness Subcommittee of the ED Task Force, and that's something that I've found is a little bit lacking too, is that principals and teachers don't know which programs we have are best for which populations.
One of the nice things about your Superintendent Tada is he's willing to run the numbers and see where they fall. He doesn't mask them up. He doesn't test them in one direction or the other. He's going to let them lay where they lay so we can get an accurate idea of what's going on so we can deal with the situation. If we're going to think out of the box... If we're going to think out of the box, why don't we think out of the box all the way to taking lessons from the private school system even? They have tutors. Those tutors are the older students. They work with their kids from the lowest grades to the highest grades. We need some more individual instruction. Doesn't cost millions and millions of dollars for each school.
Thank you. All right. Our next question. Earlier, school boards and our current superintendent have advocated the development of specialized academies. For example, schools which focus on STEM skills, single-sex leadership, and science academies. How would these schools work with our current selection and availability of magnet schools? Would these be, I'm sorry, would there be a contest for available resources? And what is your vision of magnet schools in Wake County? Let's see. Yes.
First of all, let me say that I love that Superintendent Teta is thinking out of the box and bringing some new ideas to the table. New ideas, as I said before, systems and programs that have data-driven proven results. As far as the funding goes, I don't believe that, I need to clarify the question, if you're asking if I believe there'll be a competition in funding, a competition for funding with the magnet schools?
Well, the question was, would there be a contest for available resources if we had to create new programs?
Okay. I think our magnet system is, is great, and we need to keep it in place while still bringing new ideas and programs that work into Wake County. I don't see that there will be a competition for the funds of the magnet schools. But obviously, we need to ensure that we have the funds to implement the programs that we want. I think I already stated that I think we have a phenomenal magnet system. I would like to see some program equity up here in District Three. I don't want to take anything from what the magnet schools currently have, but I would certainly like to see some options up here for our children as well.
I like the specialized academies that General Teta has put in place this year. I would have liked to have seen those incorporated into the Blue Plan for the selections. I mean, there are none of them in District Three, and it would have made the choices that people are given for their base a lot easier for people to decide, instead of just being given five schools that are basically indistinguishable from each other. So I'd like to see more of those academies incorporated across the county. My view of the magnet programs, I believe we need to do a, a serious, objective look at the magnets. My children were in a magnet elementary for four years, went back to base, and now we're at a magnet middle school. So I am definitely pro-magnet, but we need to make sure the magnets are serving the purpose that they need to be serving. And I think now, we, over the years, we have changed what we say the purpose of the magnet program is to suit what the magnet program's purposes have become. And we need to decide what we want them to do and go from there.
I had to just remind some of folks who arrived later, we are reframing from applauding. That is one of the ground rules of the forum. And I know some folks arrived a little late and didn't hear that.
I thought she was clapping for me. I'm sorry. Thanks, Mom. I'm very much in favor of the, the magnet programs because I'm kind of a product of a pre-magnet program myself. So Wake County was very kind to me, and the teachers that were in that program were very kind to me as far as giving me a launch into my, my career in college. If we're going to challenge every child at every level, then we also have a responsibility as a community, don't we, to challenge our children at the highest levels, at the medium levels, and at the lower levels, in whatever courses that they're in? It's, it's no more of a crime not to challenge a child that's doing very good in the system as it is another child. So I believe every child should be challenged at every level.
In terms of some of the new ideas the superintendent's putting on the table, in terms of STEM elementary and single-gender leadership academies, I'm still waiting to get more of the details. As a board member, we're going to have to vote on this in the near future. I have a fiscal responsibility to find out what these programs are going to cost and can we sustain them. There will be competition with magnet money because once magnet grants are done, we have to sustain the magnets. I've always been taught you don't fly the plane while you're building the plane, and you don't buy the plane before it's built. In terms of the current magnets, I strongly believe in our current magnet system. I feel we need to maintain our magnet system if you understand the historical purpose of our magnets and how they work today. I believe our magnet system tied in with a new assignment plan, I think the magnets are the canary in the coalmine. If we lose our current magnet system, I think our whole system could be slipping down the slope.
Can I have some of the questions from the audience now? No, I'm sorry. For those of you, they're on cards, and I just needed somebody to bring them up. Yeah, okay. Give me some from the top. We just now went through five questions, and it took us a half an hour. So I'm just, just, we are not, we have quite a stack here, but we will try and get to quite a few of them. The candidates will be available in all kinds of other opportunities after we leave the room, et cetera. So, all right. Let me, I'm going to read this first question. It's from Sheila Knapp. Students with disability can be physically re, I'm sorry, restrained, I'm sorry, restrained or secluded in a timeout room, and schools are not required to tell a parent unless an injury occurs. There's no data on the frequency of use of restraint. Would you change the board policy to require notification to parents? Would you collect the data, or are you happy with the current policy? And I believe Jennifer begins this time.
All right. Absolutely. If I was a parent of a special needs child, I'd want to know if they were held in the room like that. I wasn't aware that was happening in our system. I would have to look at what the board policy is exactly. I can't say whether I would change something. I'm not on the board yet, but that's definitely something I would look at. And it would be very interesting to see how often that happens and how often parents are notified or people know that, that that's happening.
Is this like a minute or 30 seconds? I didn't catch that.
I wish, still one minute.
Still one minute. Okay. I don't think I'll take one minute, but I just wanted to clarify that. Yes, anytime a teacher or a security officer has to apply for something to a child, I think that needs to be noted somewhere. Does a note need to go home to the parent every single time? Well, that's going to be something the, the board's going to have to tackle if, if that comes up for a vote. The, the question that I always ask myself is, who's got the skin in the game? And if you're the teacher of a particular class, you know how to work with that class better than other people because your boots are on the ground there. They need to have some flexibility to make those calls on the field. We can't, as a board members or as parents, we can't just meddle into every single decision that teachers make. We need to trust them with the dynamics of their class, but there needs to be a reporting system.
There's already a law on use of restraints on the books. We review it with our student teachers every year over at NC State before they go out into the schools to be certain that they are familiar with what they can and cannot do in terms of restraining students. I agree, there are times as a classroom teacher, principal, that you have to restrain a student. It's unfortunate. I do believe we should collect data. I do believe parents should be notified. But we have to understand with 146,000 students in the schools, there are going to be times where we have to restrain students. And I'm, I'm not saying that's just special needs students. I'm talking about any student. There are times where we will have to use restraints or restrain. It is unfortunate, but I do think parents need to be involved.
I too am unaware of the policy, but I absolutely believe that a parent should be notified whether your child is, has a disability or not, but especially with children with disabilities. They, the, the parent needs to be kept up to date on how that student is doing. I, I don't have a child with disabilities, so I can't speak from, from being a mom of, of a child with disabilities, but I certainly do believe that the parent needs to be notified. And if that is a board policy currently, I would love for the person that asked me that, asked that question to contact the board and have it removed and replaced.
Thank you. Next question is from Simon Fuller. Do you support charging for extracurricular activities if it's necessary? And I believe Eric Squires is first this time.
One of the questions I have about that is, are we talking about art? Are we talking about band? Are we talking about football? Well, of course, there's usury fees in everything we do in life. If a child wants to go the extra mile to something, well, if they're in band and they want to play a clarinet, that's one thing, but they want a $4,000 bassoon, that's something else. We need to use some horse sense here. We need to use some common sense and find out what do we need to do to help the child develop the most, not just in, in reading and math, but also in the extracurricular activities. Where's our best value for the dollar?
I strongly feel we should not. We're a public school system. We want equal access to extracurricular activities for all of our students who choose to participate. The research is very clear. Students who are involved in extracurricular activities do better in school grade-wise, have better attendance, and are most more likely to graduate. I don't think we need to gentrify our extracurriculars by, by charging. I think we can find ways to continue to offer these opportunities to all children who choose to participate, and I'll fight for that.
I don't agree with charging for extracurricular, charging parents for extracurricular activities. We are a public school system, and that's part of our system, that's part of our culture, and it does help make well-rounded children. I also would like to build stronger alliances with our businesses and our community groups that are out there. League of Women Voters is an example. We have so many community groups out there that I would like to engage with and work with them. And, you know, we can make a difference there financially, too. Get into the communities and, but no, I do not agree with charging parents.
Well, first, I'd like to say that we already do charge for some of our extracurricular activities, so this is not something new. A friend just told me that he pays $500 per year for his two sons to do marching band, and I believe another high school charges $1,000. So, you know, this is something we're doing already. If it gets to the point where we're not going to be able to offer extracurricular activities because we can't afford it, then I would rather see a nominal fee than for kids not to get the opportunity to participate. But it would definitely be a very nominal fee and put in, you know, safeguards for families who just couldn't afford it.
Thank you. Our next question comes from Karen Packard. What are your ideas about improving nutrition at Wake County Public Schools? She put in parentheses, "school lunches." I think Kevin Hill is our first to respond.
I'm not the right person to ask because Ann McLaurin's goal for four years has been to improve my diet. And I told her, people have failed. I think it is important that at the school, we look at trying to provide balanced lunches, balanced breakfasts. It's important. Child obesity is a, is a major problem that we have. Ann has started a lot of good work. I will miss her on the board, but I think, yes, that should be an emphasis. We have to, we got to cut back on the junk food. We got to cut back on the sugar. I can always get it when I go home.
I will continue to advocate changing the menus in our public school system. The food is not healthy, and it does not taste good. And you talk about child obesity, and almost everything available to them on the school lunch menu is carbs. So absolutely, I will be a huge advocate for changing the menu and bringing healthier items to the table for the children.
Yeah, there's really not a whole lot to add, so I would say definitely the nutrition needs to be improved in the school lunches. My sons came home from East Millbrook Middle and told me the milk choices now are skim milk, which is very hard to get kids to like, and then there's chocolate and vanilla milk now that are really sweet. My kids came home and reported what the sugar content was, and definitely, when I heard that, I thought, oh my gosh, you know, what are we doing? So definitely need to improve the nutrition.
Yeah, I'm not going to disagree with two moms. You know, that, that's just bad karma right there. I wish we could have a chef in every school. Not going to happen. But we ought to be able to come up with ways of having better choices, better tasting food for our kids so they're in the best environment to learn.
Thank you. The next question comes from Shannon Burnett. What is your stance on permitting siblings to attend the same schools, such as rising ninth graders going to the same high school as an 11th grade sibling? And Heather Lusardo will answer first this time.
Siblings and families need to stay together unless there's a parental choice involved and the parent has chosen to send one of those siblings to an alternative option. Other than that, I will advocate with everything I've got to keep families and siblings together.
Yes, I agree. Siblings should be able to stay together. It makes it very difficult for a parent to invest the time and the money, especially in high schools. That's a huge investment parents put into their child's high school career, and you want to see all your kids go through that same school.
I would say keep the kids together. Makes it a lot easier on the parents. Makes it easier on the parents to figure out all the administration that's at the school so they don't have to learn another principal and a whole nother set of teachers and everything else. Also, travel time, it's going to make a huge difference. The other part of it is when you have a fundraiser, are you raising funds for a bunch of different schools that you don't even know if you're going to be attending in a couple of years? Or are you raising money for the goodwill of a particular school that you know your siblings are going to be able to go to, too?
I think that's a pretty easy one, right there with trying to find counter continuity. Sad in countless appeal hearings over the last three and a half years, and for the most part, the board does try to keep siblings together. Wouldn't make any sense to do otherwise, so I'm, I'm all for it. I mean, we need to.
That's fine. You don't have to use the whole minute. Okay. The next question comes from Tom Wells. Parents are a critical component to a child's education. How do you propose to get parents in elementary and middle school more involved than they are now? Yes, I'm sorry, Jennifer is going to start. Jennifer Mansfield.
Curiously trying to take my notes. Well, definitely, I think having community-based schools is a big part of it. Now, if a parent wants to choose to go farther away, that's a different story, especially I know that as a magnet parent. But getting parents involved, it helps a whole heck of a lot when you're closer to the school. And I believe that we need to look at some of the community schools' models with wraparound services for some of our lower-income communities. We need to offer things at the school that will draw families to, to go there, to make that part of their family's life and part of that, that community's daily life. So definitely that, and that's something that I know they had looked at doing with Wake County Human Services. There were supposed to be maybe four pilot schools. East Millbrook was one of them, and I, that's kind of dropped off the face of the earth. I haven't heard much about that, but that's something I would like to pursue.
I think the involvement of the parents starts a long time before the parent-teacher conference or the parent-teacher night. It starts off when... It starts off when you set the stage for the parents with, through the kids, and giving that feedback system back and forth. I think everybody on the, on the board sees the, the power of the internet, sees the power of the connectivity between informing the parents of the school, informing the parents from the teachers to the kids, so that way, when the time comes for them to come around and actually participate into the school, they want to, because they already know a lot of the stuff that's going on. They've already got it on their mind, they've been thinking about it, and now they're ready to invoke some change, or at least be a part of the positive part of the process.
In 1999, when we opened Wildwood Forest Elementary, we were essentially piloting a school-family contract. We asked parents to invest 75 hours in their child each school year, recognizing that you can't always do that at the school. So we gave all sorts of ideas on how parents can get involved at home, reading to their child, listening to their child read to them. This was a year and a half before the Wake County Public School Board at the time adopted a policy for parental involvement. I'm all for parental involvement. Again, the research is very clear. The more ways you can get parents involved, the better results in terms of achievement for their children. But let's not give parents an out and let them think the only way they can be involved is physically at the building. There's so much more they can do than just get to the school and working with their children at home. We pioneered it in 99. We can do it now.
Unfortunately, we can't make parents be involved. What I would like to do is start in the beginning of the school year, having the teachers really just sit down and talk with the parent, and teach the teachers, those who don't already know, to talk with the parents and maybe teach the parents about how important it is that they engage in their child's education. I think every child wants their, or every parent wants their child to do the best, and I think some, some adults maybe weren't given the tools and don't know how to engage and don't know how important it is to engage. And I think we can be a part of that process on, on a, on a teacher level, and just building that relationship with the teacher and the parent, and so that that child can achieve the best.
Okay, next question. This one comes from Sharon Eckert. Why is it beneficial to push students into Algebra? To shorten her question, apparently there is a fairly significant or low pass rate. What does this do to the children that fail Algebra? Eric Squires is going to be the first to respond.
I understand the reasoning behind trying to get as many people as possible into Algebra I as quickly as possible. That sets a foundation for the math that builds upon itself, that ends up lending whether someone does well in college entrance or not. This has always been a big issue, is a big issue back when I was going through school, too. I think the most important part about it is even if we push a child into Algebra I by testing that didn't show itself accurate or not, if a child fails Algebra I, is that a stigma that we're going to label onto them and an anchor we're going to put on their GPA? Or are we looking to have them master the course material? Let them take it again. No shame in taking a course twice. We all did that in college. So let, let them master the material.
I think the push for Algebra I is, is being couched in the, the push to get students to take more rigorous courses, and I've never had a problem with that. I tell my students I want to hear them sweat, and I had a student email me and asked if my current group was doing that yet. The, the difficulty, though, is with some of the cutters that we're using, EVOs predictor from 70, 79% shows that those students who take Algebra I, 49% of them score Level 1 or Level 2 on the EOC. They, they're failing it. I'm asking for some longitudinal data. I'd like to know what grades the kids are making as well. The EVOs predictor says they'll be successful, but that means they can get a D, and according to the EVOs predictor, they'll be successful. As someone who's a little math impaired myself, which is why I taught history, I would like to get a little more longitudinal data. The school year's started, placement's already done. What's the rush? Let's take a month or two and get it right.
Well, I think if parents had access to EVOs data, they could sit down with the teacher, and they could come to the conclusion of, does that child belong in Algebra I? I don't think any, any student has been pushed into Algebra I. I think the findings show that they belong in Algebra I. And again, I want to involve the parents back into the equation.
Yes, I agree with Ms. Lasordo here, that we are not talking about pushing anybody into Algebra I. We are identifying the children who are qualified to be in Algebra I. And for many years, there were a lot of kids left behind, and it wasn't just low-income and minorities. It, it happened across the board, and we were not placing kids who were qualified. So that's something very important to know. We're not talking about kids who aren't ready and pushing them into it. And with Kevin, with Mr. Hill bringing up, I, I, I think, you know, it, it is worth looking at the 70 to 79% prediction from EVOs, but I have to ask why, Mr. Hill, I mean, I've been to all these ED Task Force meetings, and I've been advocating for this change in the Algebra placement. I have, I don't believe Mr. Hill has been to any ED Task Force meetings. I've seen Dr. McLaurin there, I've seen Dr., Carolyn Morrison, Keith Sutton. I've, I've not seen him, and I would have liked to have had his experience in there developing the policy in the first place.
Next question comes from Charlotte Clark Turpin. Are you strong enough as an individual to vote for what is right and equitable for all children, even when outside forces push you to vote the way they want? Our first person to respond, I believe, is Heather Lasordo on this question.
I have no hidden agenda. My agenda is focusing on children's education in Wake County, and absolutely, I am strong enough to go up against anybody and vote for what I believe is right.
I think running as an independent has shown, I've proved to myself that I'm absolutely able to go up against forces that are against me to advocate for what I think is right. Definitely, I have a long history of being able to look objectively at an issue, and I'm not swayed by rhetoric and hyperbole, and I'm willing to sit down with absolutely anybody. If you disagree with me, if you agree with me, I will, I will sit and meet with you and discuss things, and I'm not swayed by what anyone else tells me to do.
I come from the science and the research field, so we test things, we design the test well, then we figure out what the data's telling us, and we work from there. We don't make up anything along the way. Outside forces are always there. For us, well, I don't have any large national committee influencing me one way or the other. I'm going to vote for the kids. I'm going to put the kids first, and I'm not accepting monies from any of the, the large dogs out there.
I think we have to keep in mind that it's a board of nine members, not nine separate members making up a board. We're elected by district to represent the entire county, and I think that's important. We need to do what we feel is right. We need to do what we feel is equitable. I think my track record over the last three and a half years will show that I have taken some votes that have not been very popular, which is probably why I have three challengers this time around. I'm running to represent the children in District 3, and the joke is, and please, this is a joke, but unfortunately, they all come with parents.[1167.14][1167.14](Laughter). You know, and, and if the kids could vote, we'd be okay, I think. So no, I have no problems taking a tough stand. I have no interest in further office. When elected, this is it. This is it.
Okay, I think we're going to probably just do one more question, because it's getting, and then we still have the, their final statements, so in order to be sure to be wrapping up on time. The last question comes from the in's member, Bob Seagull, I think it is. Are economically integrated schools helpful to students? And Jan, Jennifer Mansfield is first on this.
I think that's the ideal, and that's something that we all want to have, but I don't think that it is necessary for students to achieve. There's been some talk about the, the single-sex leadership academies, and some of people have expressed concern that, "Oh, well, the ones in Guilford County are all black." If that's what parents choose and their students are succeeding, why are we going to complain about that? So, like I said, that it's ideal. You know, I, my kids have been very fortunate. Wildwood Forest is very, very diverse neighborhood school that they've attended, and East Millbrook is very diverse middle school that they're at, and I feel very fortunate that they've been in that position. But it's not absolutely necessary for a child to be successful in school.
Like I said before, I think it's more important for the, the community, for the social aspects of the child, to be diverse and not be trying to fix all that through the school system. My grandfather had a very famous quote that he would say. He said, "If it's not broke, then don't fix it worse." And the bottom line is, are the children achieving? We can test these things, we can let the data fall where it is, and we can make those course corrections along the way. We don't have to come up with the same cookie cutter for all the kids.
I do believe that economic integration of the schools is very important. The research is very, very, very clear. In terms of economic integration of the schools, the impact isn't basically next, having to do with the two children setting next to each other as much as the additional resources that some parents can provide to the school. The research is very clear about the teacher retention rates, and I was a first-year teacher, and my students survived me, but the research shows the longer you teach, the more effective teacher you are. And if we can try and have better teacher retention in our schools with more resources under the current economic scenarios that we have, then I think we will be able to benefit more children. So I'm a very strong supporter of economic integration of our schools.
Based on some research, I do believe that economic integration can be helpful. What I believe is more helpful is when we look at programs that work. We have got so many models that we can look at and address each individual community's needs. Maybe it's with a different model, maybe if it's, maybe it's with a traditional model, but there are ways out there that we can implement here in Wake County that are getting tremendous results, the results that we all desire for every child here in Wake County.
Okay, I'm going to say a few things. They all know they're going to deliver their closing statements for two minutes, and we will reverse the order. Kevin Hill will start. I'm going to make a couple of comments myself that gives them a few seconds to get their thoughts together. First of all, I want to thank everybody who organized this from the Wake Up Wake and the League of Women Voters of Wake County, and our two timekeepers. I've been timekeeper. It's very stressful focus, keeping your eye on that clock. Louise and Betty, LRB and Louise Romanow, thank you for doing the timekeeping tonight. I do appreciate all the stack of questions we had. I think some were answered, I think were, some were written out before we got into some of the questions, so we probably answered some of your questions. We tried to pick some out that were, addressed some issues that hadn't been brought up before. The candidates will probably be in the room for a little while afterwards, and I expect during their statements, they will tell you how you can reach them as the campaign progresses. Remember, Election Day is October 11th. I heard somebody on TV say it's 14 months away, and then I went, "Oh, okay, that's if you're running for president."[1502.74][1502.74](Laughter). So October 11th will be here very quickly. Now let's go to closing statements, and Kevin Hill will start first.
Thank you. My goal is to represent the best interests of all children in all schools, and my top priorities are to continue to focus on student achievement. We've done well, we can do better. Look for ways to expand professional development for our teachers that has been cut to the core, because the research shows that's the key. Continue advocating for fiscal responsibility. The Broad Academy conducted an audit at the request of the superintendent, and the results basically said, "We are lean. We are doing better than any of the other large systems with fewer people." In fact, they recommended that we add, so I'm not sure where we're going to encumber savings by cutting at the central office. And we need better governance and better leadership. With 35 years as a teacher and a principal, I think I have the breadth and depth of experience to help bring about improvement in these areas. I don't believe there's another candidate running for the board or who will be remaining on the board that can match what I can bring to the table as a teacher, administrator, or leader in public education. Board members don't have a direct impact on what happens in the classroom and student achievement, but almost everything a board member touches does. And as a former K-12 administrator and teacher 7 through 12, I can connect the dots from what might be a seemingly innocent budget cut to tell you how it will impact student achievement. I think effective board members are ones who approach the decision-making process with an open mind. They must be held accountable for good governance, and I will accept the, the decisions and the responsibility that will be entrusted to me. I'll continue to advocate that we put all children, all schools, first. I would appreciate your support, October 11th. hillforboe.com.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters, Wake Up Wake County, and all of you for engaging in the process and coming and hearing from all of us to find out who's the person you can get behind, support, and vote for on October 11th. A little bit about my background, and I'm an Air Force veteran. I have a professional background in the small-business banking industry, where I was in charge of a loan portfolio of over $2 billion. I think the most important thing you need to know about me for this election is that I'm a mom. I'm a mom who's been very engaged and active in my children's education, in their schools, and with our community. As a Wake County mom, I continue to work vigorously as an advocate for the educational needs of all of our children. I hope you'll join with me today, so I can be your voice and represent you on the Wake County School Board. It's time District 3 had a visionary leader that will put student achievement ahead of all else. It's time that we raise the bar of expectation for all of our children. I think we need to go ahead and start empowering parents, empowering teachers, and empowering each individual student. It's time to increase choice and implement innovative solutions that address our fiscal and our educational needs here. We must consistently look for the most efficient strategies to achieve our goals in the most cost-effective way. I offer solutions to these and other pressing issues through independent and critical thought. I bring common sense, strong leadership, effective communication skills, and a servant's heart to the table. I ask for your support, and I ask for your vote on October 11th, and please visit heatherlasordo.com for more information.
Right. I think the most important thing for voters to remember is that your only advocate, your only voice on the school board is your elected school board official. And while I very much appreciate and admire Mr. Hill's dedication as a teacher and a principal over the years, he's not running for president of the Teachers Association. This is a role where you are advocating for all the parents and citizens in District 3. And his record, he has tried to, you introduce the consensus model, and you couldn't get consensus on that. consensus on that. I think Mr. Hill has been, he's stonewalled and been very obstructionist in trying to get any positive changes made in the system. You can disagree with all of the changes that are being made, but I have not found him to be willing to work with the new board members to make any changes at all, even the ones that most people agree have been good. I have got a long track record of advocacy in the system and I will continue that for all parents. I have never, if you agree with me or if you disagree with me, either way, I will be an advocate for you, just as I always have been. And you can check out my website at mansfieldforwakescool.com and I ask for your vote on October 11th.
I was asked by a reporter recently, why in the world are you running for the school board? And I told him it's because of my cardiologist. He said I needed to get more of a workout in my heart. And I figured, if you can't work your heart out for the kids, what's the point of having a heart anyway? I appreciate all the things that the previous boards have been doing. I think Wake County is in a much better position than any of the larger school districts you see across the country that are this size. I'm very thankful for that. We've got a good relationship between the commissioners and the school board as opposed to other places in the country. And as we make our kids, as we form our kids by designing our communities and our educational system to be stronger students, we're gonna have stronger communities. As we have stronger communities, you know that we're gonna have stronger economies here. Everybody wants to come and move to Wake County and that's because they think their kids are gonna be taken care of. Everybody wants to bring their businesses to Wake County. Why? Because it's a great place to raise kids. That's what we need. Administratively, I really appreciate people being knowledgeable, having a lot of experience. But as a lot of you know, that gets you in the position to score, doesn't necessarily get you scoring. Takes a certain amount of leader to get the ball over the goal and to make the score. That's what we're looking for now. I pray that all the other candidates that are here, obviously, stay very involved with the school. I think it helps everybody. And I appreciate you guys very much. Talk about education because as you talk about education, there's a chance that it keeps getting better every time.
Thank you, and I have two more things. I'd like you all to do a round of applause for our candidates, for them coming tonight. We appreciate your time and coming and spending your evening to give us an opportunity to hear you and see you. And you've been a wonderful audience. Please fill out the comment cards and thank you for coming out tonight and listening and becoming involved voters. Don't forget to tell your friends and family that you can find the videotaped portions on the websites that were mentioned earlier in the evening.
This has been the 2011 Wake County School Board District 3 Candidate Forum presented by Wake Up Wake County and the Wake County League of Women Voters. Election Day for Wake County School Board races is October 11th. Early voting and same-day registration runs September 22nd through October 8th. To learn more about these candidates, please visit ncvoterguide.org. For more information on Wake Up Wake County, please visit wakeupwak county.org. For more information on the Wake County League of Women Voters, please visit lvwwake.org.